I'd like to welcome everybody to the Southbridge Town Council meeting, Monday, September 23rd, 2024, 7:00 PM, McKinnon Council Chambers. The agenda, number one, Pledge of Allegiance.
I would like to introduce you to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to agenda item number two, roll call.
Councillor Lazo.
Present.
Councillor Montigny.
Present.
Councillor Shinier.
Present.
Councillor Daniels.
Present.
Councillor Dow.
Present.
Councillor Kelly.
Present.
Councillor Marquetti.
Present.
Councillor Ortiz.
Present.
Councillor Rivas.
Present.
We have a quorum. Moving on to Consider and Accept the Meeting Minutes of September 9th, 2024, Town Council?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinier, seconded by Ortiz. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to those minutes of that day? Councillor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Just I noticed on the, on the list of names, my, my name is spelled wrong.
Thank you.
If you could just add the PH and delete the V. Thank you.
Duly noted. Any further additions, corrections, or deletions? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on, September 9th, 2024, Public Hearing. Your motion?
So moved.
Second.
This is a motion by Shinier, seconded by Ortiz. Any additions, corrections, or deletions to those minutes? If not, all those in favor? Opposed?
abstained.
Abstained.
Two abstentions. Moving on to agenda item number four, Subcommittee Reports, Department of Public Works, Councillor Shinier.
No report, no meeting scheduled.
Education Human Services, Councillor Montigny.
Thank you very much. We did not have a meeting and do not have one scheduled at this time.
General Government, Councillor Kelly.
No, no meeting scheduled.
Moving on to Planning and Development, Councillor Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. We had a meeting last week and there were four items on tonight's agenda that were discussed.
Thank you. Protectors of persons of property, Councillor Dow.
Thank you, Chair, through you. No meeting, no schedule. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going under Chairman's announcements. First of all, I'd like to announce that we have a joint meeting Monday, 7:00 PM, on 9:30 with the School Committee, and the discussion was, is going to be on the buildings. Was I on the wrong date?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, 10:28.
Oh.
See you corrected. It's 10:28, 7 o'clock?
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM. Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Discussion that night will be the buildings. I know that they've done a facility study and it was an opportunity we could have met separately, but I think meeting jointly would be better so the School Committee and the Council can get more familiar with each other and start working together on some of the issues while we're working on the, taking, getting our schools back. I have no further, the only thing I'd like to say, I'd like to, we have a walkout Saturday, 5 o'clock, for John Matthew, longtime firefighter. It's going to be a walkout at 5:00 and then after, there's going to be festivities at Seven Mills Street, at Lazo's Cafe, having a little buffet for him. I'd just like to thank Johnny for all the great work that he's done, the lives he's saved, and his duty for the years that he had in was outstanding, and John Matthews, thank you very much. I have no further announcements. Moving on to Town Manager's announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Just a couple postings that we've had out on the, our Facebook page that we've pushed out, reminded that we continue with the local Pave 2024 projects. Tomorrow, contractors will complete the top coat on Tipton Rock Road, Surrey Lane, and Trail Save Wave, and then they'll follow with top coats on Derby Street, Fairmont, Dennison Drive, and Mass Ave, and we will post those when they happen. If you have any questions, please contact the Department of Public Works directly at We have executed the contract with the East Main Street and the Director of the Department of Public Works has set up a meeting with Amarillo to get the dates for the start of that construction. The playground on Main Street is being completed this week. We have so far construction doing some excavation there today and tomorrow, and then they'll have the playground installed, that project through the CDBG funding. Has to be completed by the end of the month because we have to close out that grant in order to start our next cycle on the grant, so thank you to all those involved to get that completed. Reminded next week, on October 3rd, at noon, there'll be the auction on town-owned tax title properties. Any other rules of the auction are advertised on our website under the Treasure Collector Whitewater has announced that the Southbridge Water Department is starting their semi-annual hydrant fruition next Sunday, the 29th, at 9:00 PM, and that will continue during the overnight hours between 9:00 PM and 5:00 AM. Hydrant function to go on for approximately six to eight weeks. Customers are encouraged to check their water prior to washing clothes. You may get some accumulated sediments in the house laterals and some disfigured water. The water will clear up after a brief run of the water at the tap. If you have any questions or concerns, please contact the Water Department at 508-764-3207. That has also been put out onto our social media platform. The last meeting, I announced that we were waiting word for the Department of Public Utilities regarding the electric aggregation plan. Today, we received an email with a letter stating that our plan was approved by the Department of Public Utilities, and that was as to the revised filing of August 20th, and it is approved. We'll be working with Good Energy on the electric service agreement, and again, the next council meeting, we would just have a information regarding the authorization to award the bid, but I'll have more information when that becomes available. And that is all I have this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Moving on to presentations, our first presentation is a proclamation for Mrs. Dela, Del, excuse me, Dela, Teragonis, Teradonski, I'm sorry, and I'm half Polish, but my Polish name was Zajak on my mother's side. It was very simple, but she was my beloved. John Daniels will do the presentation. John?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Recently, I had the great pleasure of being able to sit down and speak with Ms. Tagonski about her life, and what was remarkable about it was that it was just a well-lived life. She didn't do anything extraordinary, like fly to the moon or fly airplanes, but she led a life where she had family that she took care of. She took care of herself as well to live this long life. She's still very able to get around. She has a dedicated son that looks out for her. She's just a remarkable woman in the fact that she's gotten this far and, and done well by herself. So I'm very pleased to be able to present this proclamation tonight to Delia, and it goes as follows. Resolved by the Council of the Town of Southbridge, whereas Delia was born on Kingsley Street in Southbridge, Mass. on April 27th, 1923, whereas Delia was the oldest girl of 10 children, whereas Delia attended Massey Street School in Southbridge, whereas Delia, in true family spirit, and because of the Great Depression, began work at the American Optical Company and went on to establish herself as a dedicated employee for 38 years, whereas Delia has one son, Jeffrey, and five grandchildren, whereas Delia was the family caregiver, providing care not only to her immediate family, but to her siblings as well. In witness therefore on this day, Monday, September 23rd, 2024, this council wishes to congratulate and celebrate Delia having reached the age of 101, thereby making her the oldest resident in the Town of Southbridge. Further, this council thanks Delia for being a good citizen of Southbridge and wishes her continued good health, blessings, and many more birthdays to come. Presented by Scott S. Lazo, Chairman of the Southbridge Town Council. Delia wishes me to express her thanks to the council and to, to, to thank them for their, their concern, their caring, and for presenting her with a wonderful proclamation like this. So again, thank you.[628.82][628.82](applause)
Moving on to proclamation for the Library Card Sign Up Month. At this time, the Vice Chairman will do the presentation.
Thank you very much. Yesterday is September, everybody's back to school, so it's Library Card Sign Up Month, and we have a proclamation from the Town Council praising libraries. And our library, Jacob Edwards Library, says, "Library Card Sign Up Month 2024 Proclamation resolved by the Town Council of the Town of Southbridge, whereas libraries are essential for the education and development of children, offering everything from preschool storytimes to college and career planning resources for high school students nurturing literacy and a love for reading. Whereas libraries provide welcoming and inclusive spaces where individuals from all backgrounds can learn and connect, bridging cultural, ethnic, generational, and economic divides and strengthening the social fabric of their communities. Whereas libraries are committed to creating and maintaining diverse programs and collections that reflect the communities they serve, ensuring equitable access for all. Whereas libraries assist people of all ages in navigating life's complexities, offering access to research, information, and government services that enhance productivity and fulfillment. Whereas libraries boost the local economy by providing critical access to technology and training for job seekers, entrepreneurs, and students. Whereas during times of crisis, libraries and their staff play a vital role in supporting communities both in person and virtually. Whereas the shared resources provided by libraries help households save money, conserve resources, and reduce waste, offering a simple way to make a positive impact. Whereas a library card ignites creativity and empowers individuals to explore new interests and pursue lifelong learning. Whereas libraries uphold democracy by promoting civic engagement and the free exchange of information and ideas for all. Therefore, be it resolved that the Southbridge Town Council proclaim September as Library Card Sign Up Month in Southbridge and encourage everyone to sign up for a library card today. The signature is by Chairman Scott S. Lazo and Vice Chairman Michael Montigny." And I also have it in Spanish, and if you pardon my Spanish, I do enjoy speaking it though. It says, "Proclamación del mes de inscripción para tarjeta de la biblioteca 2024, resuelto por el Consejo de la Ciudad de Southbridge, considerando que las bibliotecas ofrecen espacios acogedores e inclusivos donde las personas de todos los origenes pueden aprender y conectarse, reduciendo las brechas culturales, étnicas, generaciones, y económicas, y fortaleciendo el tejido social de sus comunidades. Considerando que las bibliotecas están comprometidas y mantener programas y colecciones diversos que reflejan las comunidades a las que sirven garantizado el acceso equitativo para todos. Considerando que las bibliotecas ayudan a las personas de todas las edades a navegar por las complejidades de la vida, ofreciendo acceso a la investigación y la información y los servicios gubernamentales que mejoran la productividad y la satisfacción. Considerando que las bibliotecas impulsan la economía local al proporcionar acceso crítico a la tecnología y la capacitación para los solicitantes de empleo empresarios y estudiantes. Considerando que en tiempos de crisis las bibliotecas y su personal desempeñan un papel vital en el apoyo a las comunidades tanto en persona como virtualmente. Considerando que los recursos compartidos proporcionados por las bibliotecas ayudan a los hogares a ahorrar dinero, conservar recursos, y reducir los residuos, ofreciendo una forma sencilla de tener un impacto positivo. Considerando que una tarjeta de biblioteca enciende la creatividad y empodera a las personas para explorar nuevos intereses y seguir el aprendizaje fermentante. Considerando que las bibliotecas defienden la democracia promoviendo el compromiso cívico y el libre intercambio de información y ideas para todos. Por lo tanto, resolvase que el ajumiento de Southbridge proclame septiembre como el mes de inscripción de la tarjeta de la biblioteca en Southbridge y aliente a todos a inscribirse para obtener una tarjeta de la biblioteca hoy."[975.13][975.13](applause) Thank you. And thank you to the library and Jacob Edwards Library.
As they would say in Polish, czynkuja, so that's it. Okay, moving on to Citizens Forum, number eight. Are there any citizens that would like to address the council on anything that is not on the agenda tonight?
Hi, and I'm not going to say in Spanish, but you did a great job, Mike.
Thank you.
Maureen Doyle, 771 Lebanon Hill. I'm happy to announce the plastic bag ban is still in place, thanks to the Board of Health, and I would encourage people not to switch to another disposable bag, but to use a hardy reusable cloth or heavy plastic like a feedbag that can be easily cleaned and reused at grocery stores, farmers' markets, and all shopping venues. Stick this bag, bag by your door or in your car. Write it on your shopping list as an aid to not forgetting it. Our polluted world can be a little less polluted with our individual actions. And I also wanted to remind everybody that it's Walktober. They have a Facebook page, you can Google it, there's a QR code, this is my extra copy if everybody, if anybody wants, wants it. And I'm giving you a goal. Look for this leaf. This is a sweet gum. I think it's really neat. And there's a lot of great examples of sweet gum at Wellsworth, or for all time Southbridge residents like myself, the old AO. It has a really neat seed head. I don't know if you can see it, but it's kind of spiky. It's kind of neat. And its closest relative is the witch hazel, which is, has beautiful fall colors also, and actually blooms in late fall or early winter. So sweet gum is really tall, as you can see at Wellsworth, and witch hazel is short. They don't have any there, but you can look for it. So the autumnal equinox was yesterday, fall is officially here. Enjoy it and nature and protect it by not using disposable plastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens that would like to address the council on any issues that are not on the agenda? If not, we're moving on to Agenda Item Number Nine. Vote to accept the warrant for the state election on Tuesday, November 5th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinier, seconded by Ortiz. Discussion. There's no discussion, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to number 10. Vote to allow deer hunting in the town's watershedlands, starting on October 7th, 2024, and ending on December 31st, 2024. Subject to all hunters, to town lands must comply with all Massachusetts hunting laws.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinier, seconded by Ortiz. Discussion. No discussion, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to number 11. Vote to enter into an agreement with the, with Pablo Santiago for a CDBG-FY2223 commercial rehab project to renovate 44 Hamilton Street. Facade for, let's see, $37,380, and allow the Town Manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinier, seconded by Ortiz. Councillor Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. This item was voted to be moved forward 3-0 in committee.
Any further discussion? Councillor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I do see that in tonight's packet, the Pablo Santiago, Santiago's license was provided as I asked for. I don't really have a problem supporting this, but I do think when we give these tax dollars away like this for projects in town, for business owners downtown, there should be some sort of follow-through, make sure the work is being done, make sure that all receipts are brought forward, and the work is, is completed on time, because I mean, I, I see a lot of projects that we give money to and then the, nothing happens at the buildings. Prime example is the building next door, which I don't see any, any work being done on it, even though we were told some work was going to get done on it. So I don't, I don't like to see us give money to these business owners and then nothing happens for a year. I'd like to see some sort of time limit, some sort of schedule set, brought forward before giving them the funds that they, they need to complete the project. But I have no problem supporting it tonight. Thank you.
Any further discussion, Mr. Town Manager?
Through you to the previous speaker. The other project that you are talking about, the owner of that building contacted me Friday evening, requested a meeting with me, so I anticipate meeting with him within the next, probably next week with our schedule, so he has requested a meeting with us, and we will follow through on that, as we have been.
Any further discussion? Councillor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I did view the video from Planning and Development meeting concerning this issue, and I, I kind of agree with Mr. Mar, with Councillor Marquetti's concerns over it in this particular instance. The, as I understand it, the, the business owner is also going to be the contractor, and so we're actually giving a grant, in other words, to the owner to do the work, or I guess that's how the program has worked, and I guess I don't have any, any issues with it per se, but it does seem to contemplate a three, a three-way arrangement, whereas this is going to be a two-way arrangement. And I'm not sure, from the documents I've seen, what the town's follow-up or enforcement mechanism is to ensure that the work gets done. So I do have some concerns over it, however, despite the concerns, I'm willing to support it. Thank you.
Any further discussion? You have no, Councillor Dow?
Thank you, Chair, through you. What kind of business is that? Do we have, you know, the grant we're given, or the loan, whatever?
Peg?
I, forgive me, I couldn't hear the question. Good evening, Town Council.
What kind of, what kind of business we're giving the money for?
I do have the Pablo Santiago, the property owner, who represents the construction company also here, if you want to ask him questions directly.
Get an idea of what we're giving the money to for what?
Of course.
If you don't mind, please?
Of course, sure. And if I could just indulge the comments about verifying the work is done, yes, we, the office will verify that the work is done. We have a housing rehab specialist we can ask to review the work. That's within the scope. We could also ask the building inspector to make sure that the permits were fulfilled, and then we would not cut a check until it was. He's already provided the 50% payment bond towards the project as part of his bid. His 25% check has already been provided to us, so, you know, he's, he's well above board for all the requirements to ensure he follows the, you know, the proper procedures to be accountable as a, as a registered corporation?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so I'll bring him up. Go ahead.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So my name is Pablo Santiago. I am the, as you know, the owner of 44 Hamilton Street. I'm also the CEO and licensed contractor on record for PDS Construction, I think. So if you would allow me just to give you a little brief history about why I'm here today. We previously got a grant for that property that was very close to before COVID, so we had some challenges with that aspect, and also we couldn't get a bid. We couldn't get a company to come in, and that motivated me to get my construction license, because this is not, this is, you know, one of many other buildings that I had that have those kind of challenges with. But in this particular type of grant, it's difficult because it is complicated. It requires a company to be bonded. It requires general liability insurance, so you have to have a certain amount of credit, financial stability to be able to even bid. So I, I found that a lot of contractors were either too small and didn't meet those qualifications, or they were too big and the amount of money just wasn't, you know, feasible for them, especially with the prevailing wages. So that's why I'm here today. But as Margaret stated, my company is incorporated in Massachusetts, bonded insured as far as the timeline. So this is something that I've been wanting to get done for years. So to me, this is as soon as possible. The challenges that we have, obviously, the winter's coming, but as soon as we get the green light, I'm moving forward. So this is not something that's going to take a year. I expect to be done within 90 days or less. So any questions?
Councillor Dow?
Thank you, Chair, through you. My question is, what kind of business you opening there?
Sure. So the, the anchor business, I mean, it's a small, it's a small property, but the anchor tenant will be Vocero Hispano Newspaper, which is already tied, tied into the community. We serve, I also am, I'm the owner of that, of that company. It's been established in Massachusetts since 1990, 35.
Southern newspaper? That's what I heard? I, I'm not hearing you well.
Sorry, Vocero Hispano Newspaper. It's a Hispanic, Hispanic language newspaper, or a media company essentially, so that is going to be the anchor tenant. The other space is, my plans are to do a professional office space on the other side. There's technically two, the building is set up in two, and then we'll have an open meeting space where we could, that'll be more common area for the tenants, Vocero, and whoever I lease it to, and also for community engagement, nonprofits, et cetera, to be able to use that space.
So you say open space for meeting?
Yes, yes. Something, so as a member of like Southbridge Business Partnership, I know that they have meetings. This is something where, for example, that we could offer that space, you know, to the community and engage them, because Vocero, it, it's a type of business that needs to engage, you know, with the community. So that's something that's going, that's part of our business plan, period. That's why we decided to do what we did.
Okay. In that place, is enough to do the newspapers and the meeting?
Oh, yes, yeah. The building, I mean, it looks small from the outside, but it's, 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 it has significant space, and the paper itself is not, I mean, we're modernized, so I have people working from other parts of the country, other parts of the world remotely, so it's not a place where we're going to have 20 or 30 employees, it's just not, not it. So it's very much a small business. Correct, yes.
How many employees are going to be at that business?
Part-time employees, I'd say no more than three or four. Like I said, we're, we're very modern and we work remotely, so a lot of our, like correspondence, a lot of our designing is all out of the office.
Councillor? So it's great to hear that El Vocero is going to have a local presence. We have, there's huge readership in our community, and I'd love to hear about the shared space for the business partnership, and there are many other small nonprofits that would absolutely love to utilize that space, for meeting space. We're always kind of hunting for different spaces for meetings in the community, so that's, it's great to hear.
Thank you.
And I did also watch the Planning and Development Subcommittee. for meeting space. We're always kind of hunting for different spaces for meetings in the community. So that's, it's great to hear.
Thank you.
And I did also watch the Planning and Development Subcommittee meeting. I do feel comfortable with the oversight from Peg's office, and knowing C D B G has been around for a long time, and sort of the reporting for that funding is very specific on how that needs to be reported out and monitored. So I feel comfortable with that process. This isn't something new. The town has been giving out these grants for a very long time. And, yeah, and I look forward to seeing the work being done.
Thank you, thank you so much. Yeah, and I understand that Southbridge has about thirty-one percent Hispanic population. So I understand that's one of the reasons we came out here to begin with. And we, we always, as far as Vocero, we're always looking for ways to engage and serve as a bridge. Because, you know, there's usually a, you know, a space in between, connecting between the mainstream and the Hispanic. And so that's what, that's the void that we fill in, is to communicate. So I'm always looking for opportunities. I think that, when, when we first came up with that idea for that space, I think that was one of it. How can we engage with the local community? And that physical presence, I'm glad that you mentioned that, because that's one of the reasons why we stayed here, because we have an office in Worcester as well. So it's very important. You know, one thing I would like to say is, I'm, I respect this opportunity. I respect my, my position, my ownership in that property. So, you know, we have very much the same objective, objective to make sure that things are done accordingly. They're done, they will exceed the minimum standards of building code. And then, like I said, this situation really initiated from the challenges that we had in the first grant. So now I'm sitting here before you today with a brand-new company, construction, being able to hire employees with, you know, the opportunity to grow. And so to me, that's a great opportunity that I will not take lightly. So every, you know, every aspect of this construction will be oversaw by me, and I'll make sure that everything is done accordingly. And I'll be as transparent as I need to be with any member here.
Counsel Shinia.
Just a question maybe to Peg, or I'm not sure who. The paperwork that we have, your, the cost is forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. Is the difference between that and what you're getting, is that the twenty-five percent share? Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, so it'll be the forty-nine, well, speaking as the owner, it'll be forty-nine minus the twenty-five percent that the office knows.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and as far as profitability, we're keeping that within, under, well, under ten percent. So I'm not walking out with a, my, essentially, my profit would be in the experience of working with the town with this type of grant, because there's all the opportunities after this, and with being able to renovate a building that, that we care about, and bringing that, that corner, which is kind of strategic to, you know, Southbridge up to its full potential.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? And no further discussion, I'd just like to say thank you for investing in Southbridge, and hopefully we can have a great relationship moving forward.
Thank you, sir. Look forward to it. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Any further discussion by council? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, one opposed. Moving on to twelve. Vote to enter into an agreement with the Department of Energy Resources for the Green Communities Grant for two-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars to complete weatherization projects at the D P W Senior Center and Library, and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved.
Second.
Is the motion second. Discussion? Counselor Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chair through you. This was, this was voted to be moved forward by a three-to-zero vote in committee.
It's favorable to the Subcommittee. Any further discussion by committee? Not all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to thirteen. Vote to enter into an agreement with the Egadian Energy Management Solutions L L C for the installation of exterior wall-mounted lighting for illumination of parking lot areas under the national grid incentive in the amount of estimated seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars. And allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you through you. I thank the chairman for allowing me to add this to the agenda. This paperwork came in late on Thursday afternoon. Mister LaFlesche, who's been doing a lot of the procurement work and working with us to get the door project underway at the community center, had contacted and expressed concern about lighting outside of that building, especially at night when they have trips, and if there was any programs available for us to utilize to work and get some lighting through any grant incentive. So we did put him in touch with Egadian, who is our consultant. We got into these programs, and Mister Whitting, George Whitten and his team went down and did an evaluation and was able to find a, an opportunity for us, an incentive for us to upgrade the lighting and install new lighting on one of the walls to illuminate that parking lot. It would also add, right now, on two of the south-side walls, there were no lights at all. This would add new lighting in those areas. It would also install a time clock with battery, so that it would be automatic on-off, so those lights would go on and off, and would provide additional security to that area. I did have the estimated cost at seven thousand, three twenty-two. The only reason I did that was because the consultant, when he sent it to us, because of the type of, of, it's under the MEC contract, and I actually met with him on Thursday at that conference. There was a slight one percent charge for the MEC conference, I mean, the Met processing of the grant. So the total number will only go up to seven thousand, four sixty-seven. So we're talking a difference of a hundred and forty-five dollars. It would go to our monthly utility bills at zero percent interest. We would pay back that cost over sixty-month period at one twenty-four, forty-five. So there's no out-of-pocket cost to install these lights. We have to have the project done by December thirty-first. That's why I wanted to get it approved as soon as possible, so that we could get everything ordered and installed. So I hope you support that, because it is definitely needed, especially with the late-night trips that they're having there at the community center when they get back later at night. We want to provide that lighting. During the election seasons, we have to install, use a portable trailer lighting to light up the area. So I thank you for your time.
Any discussion? Counsel Dow.
Thank you, Chair through you. It's a great idea. Town Manager, do you have any idea if we're going to purchase our own generator? I believe we'll rent one there now, just sitting there. So we have any plan in the future to get our own generator for that building? Be able to support those lights as well, or not?
That generator down there is owned by the town currently. We have, but it's on a trailer. We have a new generator that was secured by the fire chief at permit generate to install. We've already talked to a local contractor that is going to donate to put a pad in. And then we have the electrical and fencing, security fencing and, and light. So that project is underway. We already have the quotes for that, so.
Because I always thought, we have one in the past, we'll rent one.
We, we currently rent a, a generator down on South Street. So they're, they would move that generator. So we do have, we do have plans to get rid of the one that they rent.
And that generator we have already will support those lights to be on to when the power go off?
The new one?
The light we're going to install there?
Yes, yeah, it was all specked out for that, for the heating, because it is our emergency operations center. So it'll be hide-piped with natural gas and everything, so.
Perfect, thank you.
We looked at, we have Opera Funded, so we have to complete that project by the end of this year.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman through you. So this will be paid for through the electric bill, is that?
Just the electric bill, correct.
Okay.
And we get revenue for that, because of the rental of the building.
All right.
Any rentals, we have a revolving fund for that.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel?
Just a quick logistical question. I know in the packet, it says senior center, but in the item, it didn't specify that it was a senior center, unless that was updated.
Yeah.
Guess it's on senior center, sounds right at the top.
Yeah, so it's the grant, so, yeah. The packet's clearly delineated, but I get your point.
Again, just a logistical question.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to fourteen. Vote to accept a waiver of appraisal and damages related to the East Main Street Construction Front, Southbridge Associates, Two L L C for permanent drainage easements and temporary construction easements as shown in the plan entitled East Main Street Roadway Improvements Project, Morris Street to four twenty-five East Main Street. And allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
So moved.
Motion by O R T E. Second. By Counsel Shinia. Discussion? Counselor Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chair through you. This was voted three-zero to move forward.
Any further discussion by council? Counsel Dow.
Thank you, Chair through you. I mean, it's very clear and simple, but if you see on the plan, are we going when we install, the town install the drainage? Do we have to exceed those drainage to association, associate LLC property? So we're going to continue those drainage to end up in where it's going to go? So we have to go on their land to install those drainage? What I mean is, like, the main, East Main Street, you're going to put the drainage there, but the drainage have to continue to go, obviously, drain the water on, on the water side? And we have to go to the other LLC property to put those drainage? Or no, we're only doing on Main Street? We're not, in case we touch the other property, then we have the waiver? Or we're going to be working specific on the other property to continue the drainage?
I can answer that if you'd like.
Great.
Go ahead.
Yes, if I may through you, Chair. These are on A O property. These will be permanent drainage easements, so these are ours. They exist. We're already using them. It's just a formality as part of the construction. We have to get the permanent drainage easement for those.
May I continue?
So it's not actually on the town property?
Correct.
On, on the LLC?
Hence, hence requiring the easement.
Town on him? You say the town on him?
They are in use. The town is asking for permanent access to these drainages. We will be doing construction on these drainages and having permanent access and use of these drainages. That's why it's required to have a permanent easement.
So in the past, there's no easement or anything? How the town end up on him if it's not on his property, and we don't have any easement on the Ds already?
That's a good question. Sometimes, you know, legacy infrastructure may not have been properly documented. Whether or not it already exists, I can't speak to, but this is what the engineers are requiring for this project. I could look into it and get back to you if you'd like.
You know, because it seems like we're doing the waiver to do somebody else's work. You know, I don't believe the town responsible for these drainings is not on its property, is not on our property.
Well, the thing is, it's on their property, but the thing is, it's our drainage. So we're getting an easement that we're going to own the easement, that we can go fix our pipe, because anytime, like, the street drains drain into this area, and then it goes into the river, we cross the property, now we're going to have an easement permanently, that if there's any problem, we can just go on the property and fix it.
No, I understand what you mean, Chair, but my question is, how we already have them is no easement in the past? Because usually, any property, the town or government have something to be able to run the drainage, whatever. They have the easement already. How come we don't have it? Why is not on record? How we was able to own these pipe or install them in the past was no, was no easement? I know you're just, you know, you're the future, not the past, but I'm saying, why we don't have, like, any other property on record easement in the past to own or work on them in the past?
If I may through you.
If I may. Counsel, to the previous speaker. Had we known about these questions, I would have researched it so that we could have this prepared, and we will research it. I wasn't aware that that was a concern about the past. To the chairman's point, we do, we are putting drainage, and we have to drain the water from East Main Street, and it has to go somewhere, and we're going to have to do it through those drainage pipes. I don't know why it wasn't done in the past, but this is, this, this was all done by our attorneys to make sure that we were correct, and through title searches and the like, to see if there were any titles out there.
Mister Town Manager, Chair, if I continue, thank you. I did ask the question, and it was on Main Street, our work, our property. In case we touch his property, we have, we're clear, we're not responsible. But now it's end up, we're not doing anything on the town property, it's all on a private property?
No, we are doing the town. We are doing the town drainage.
But we're going on his property. When I asked the question earlier, a few days ago, was only on the town property, and never was explained, we're going to their personal property. If I know that, I will ask the question there.
Yeah, no, I understand.
So I think I will postpone that, and to get more information, we can move forward with it.
If I may through you, Chair, by definition, an easement would have to be on someone else's property, right? That's the reason we pursue them. We have, of course, to do our own, and then where we step outside of our bounds, we get the temporary easements. Where we permanently step outside of our bounds and need access, we ask for permanent easements. We're lucky that we only have a few in this project. We're doing the tip right-of-ways right now, and there's going to be some eighty-something right-of-ways that we have to deal with for those projects. So this is a simple one, but pretty standard, that, you know, we will end up, you know, stepping outside of what's our traditional right-of-way. And again, I'm happy to do any research I can on the previous ownership of that.
You know, I like to fix the town and do things better, improve, but I don't like the loophole, loophole thing. You know, we're saying some weird word on, on the agenda, we're trying to go, like, a loop way to, to do something in, in a private, in a loop way, and this is what I don't like. You know, if you, if the thing came straight and very clear from the beginning, I don't think I'd be asking those questions. But I feel like we, or me personally, I feel like I'm being, I'm going to use that kind of, I don't know if it's properly, but trick, like, I'm getting, the question is tricking me to improve that project. So I'm not going to be supportive of that. Thank you.
Peg, just a quick question. Whether there was an easement there or not doesn't bother me, because half this town doesn't have the proper easements on the drainage that we have. I'm exaggerating the half pot. But the thing is, by doing this cleans it up, that we have a modern-day easement put in place where we know that the drains are ours, we're responsible for them, we can go work on them at any time. I looked at it as, yeah, maybe there is an easement, or there is an easement, a past. But the thing is, if we're putting a new drainage pipe to drain our streets into that river, I would like to have a cleaned-up easement to get on there, just in case, you know, we research it, and then all of a sudden, there is no easement. So what's the difference? We're going to come back and do an easement, right? So why would I stop the project? That's why I was very, the way this is worded, I had, I had a discussion with counselors of, why do we need an easement? You know, well, because maybe the easement's not there, or it is there. This is to clean it up, and that's when I saw it clearer to go forward. So I just don't want to misunderstand it. Our drain water from the streets are going through this drain pipe on this easement into the river.
Well said.
Okay. Counsel Shinia.
And that was my, my question, pretty much, what you just said. And I look at that as a, a protection for the town. And I'm assuming that as this project evolves, we're going to have multiple, more of these issues come forward. Am I maybe correct?
If I may through you, you'll only have temporary easements come before you.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Counsel Rivas?
So through you, Mr. Chair. So this is for our project. Am I correct?
Correct, yes. So, and, you know, as we all know, standard roadway requires drainage, and so this is our roadway and drainage project with sidewalks, water upgrades.
Thank you.
Counsel Marquetti then Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman through you. First of all, I doubt if we can have drainage going into the river because of new stormwater laws. So it's probably some drainage that will go into the wastewater system and down to the W. The other thing, I'm wondering if maybe if you look at the history of the A O, those drains, the whole road was probably built by the A O. So I would say this is something we should do, we got to do, and it's part of this project to get this thing going. And also, you know, I've been down on that East Main during heavy rain, and it does get pretty flooded. So I had, at one point, I had a pickup truck, and the water came right up to the bed of my pickup truck. So it is time to get some drainage down there. So I'm going to support it. Thank you.
Counsel Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman through you. Frankly, I think whether or not there were easements in the past is simply irrelevant to this project. Then perhaps the way that road was designed in the past, we didn't need, we didn't need an easement in that particular area for drainage, the way the engineers have designed this, this improvement. Now we need an, we need an easement in this area. You know, it's just simply a permission that the LLC will grant to the town permanently for drainage purposes. It's just simply a part of the, you're part of the. It's just simply a, a part of the, a part of the requirements of, of the construction project and I see no reason to make it into, into an issue. Thank you.
Any further discussion by counselors? If no further discussion, thank you, Peggy. All those in favor? Opposed? One opposed.
Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Fifteen. Vote to approve the town council to submit a letter of support indicating the in-kind contribution of $700,000 in the East Main Street infrastructure improvements towards the redevelopment of Forty and Fifty Optical Drive and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Just go to D W.
Counselor? This item was discussed during a P and D meeting, during part of a lodge presentation that Chip Norton made regarding the, the campus itself. I had asked Chip to come in to the council, to the committee to discuss what was happening down there, give us an idea as to what would be coming in the near future and in the far future. And this item was discussed during that time.
Thank you. Any further discussion by counselors? Counselor Dow?
Thank you, Chair through you. This is one of the, the ones surprised me. How many years, we never look at those drainage and suddenly from nowhere now, that property doing work on that property, now kinda we're gonna start doing draining and update their, their property work, the town supposedly. But I think that's just to, to help them, not helping the town drain. This is how I see it. And, and I don't think that's right because those money, we can go somewhere else in the town property or town road and be more improvement for our residents. Thank you.
Counselor Ma, thank you.
Thank you. Just a clarification maybe through you to the town manager. The $700,000 here has already been like spent, voted on, appropriated in some way and we're just putting, just to my understanding, we're putting our just blessing that this can be said that it's used for his project or it is, it helps for his project. Like, we're, we're using the $700,000 somewhere else on East Main Street, no matter what we do tonight for this item. Is that correct?
Outside of whatever permanent easement that we are gonna use, which we would have to do anyway to repair the road, we're not doing any other improvements to, to his property outside of what would be done for the scope of this project that's been proved and funded through various means, sewer water enterprise funds, grants and a road project. It's a road project.
So, so this just says that a project that we already have going on can help him qualify for some other stuff?
All it's saying is that, yes, it's a, no, we're not giving him any money or anything. It's just saying that we noticed that we, we are doing this road. It has been a road project that $700 of this would directly be an improvement in front of his property.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Counselor Rivas?
I think, you know, being someone that lives in that area, any improvements to that complex does benefit people that live in that area of our community. And it is an area that needs a lot of attention and I think that we aren't giving any money. We're just supporting a project that is going to benefit all of our community. And I do think that, you know, maybe because it doesn't benefit specific sections of our, of our town, we need to look at all of, all different areas in our community that need improvement. It is, it's not just about the central core. It's not just about the businesses downtown, which are extremely important, but improvements to this property are going to help the people in that area that utilize those spaces, you know, to walk their dogs, to go running, to, again, it beautifies and complements what we, you know, we all utilize the common and it is adjacent to our town common. So any project that is happening at Optical Drive and the residents that are gonna live there, they are, they are voters, they are residents in our community and they also should benefit from things that we're voting on. And especially if, if it's not taking any money. We're already utilizing money that's been utilized, we're just supporting a project that's happening there. So I don't think that it, it's basically a no-brainer.
Counselor Dow?
Thank you, Chair through you. So let's give every private property money or prove them for to go, got a loan and help them to prove the town. I think our property, it's town property, is a lot of residents drive and pay tax as well. They deserve good road, good infrastructure, they deserve to be riding on a nice road. This is a private property, that's what I said in the past, is a loophole. Loophole we're going around because we don't wanna say the truth and I don't think it's right. So again, you guys think whatever you wanna think, but I think this is, it's not right for our citizen and our residents. Thank you.
I, I got to comment, excuse me. There's a misconception here. We are not giving any money to Optical Drive, number one. Number two, the money is going into Southbridge Roads and Infrastructure, all $700,000. And the counselors that are so concerned about this should be more concerned about the impact on a sewer plant, the impact on the water, water system. Because the debate tonight, the, the thing that I had to tug of war was housing industry. That's the real debate here. Cause we're not giving anybody any money. We're allowing them to give a letter saying that this is our, we're showing good faith in dealing with that in the town. So as we look at this, we are not giving anybody any money. We're putting it into our road, part of our East Main Street project, part of the, the trail and everything's intertwined. Our drainage needs a place to go, that's why we have the easements. It's not like we're putting a pipe in for the American Optical Company or any other businesses. We're just doing our road and allowing Chip Norton and his group to use the letter for state financing or federal dollars to go into the Optical Drive.
Thank you, Chair through you. We do give them the money. When you say state, I pay the state tax, you pay the state, everybody pay. The money doesn't come on the tree. We pay those money. We do go on their private property, improve and run the drainage, sewers, whatever, for his project to continue to do different apartment. You say the sewer plant doesn't fit, why it doesn't go business-wise? I support them all the way if you do businesses down there. Is we're gonna have a, how many apartment? The town doesn't fit, then you need more police, more fire department. I think we, we, we doing something wrong here we're not seeing in the future, you know? Enough trying to sell the people bull [BLEEP]. Thank you.
Counselor Marketti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I do agree with Joe about other roads needing work in town, I really do. I, I have had a few calls from people last week about their roads not getting fixed in certain areas of town. But I do think that East Main Street does need some work. That sidewalk is too small for people to walk on. It's a hazard when people are traveling on East Main, they're going exceedingly fast. There even, was even a, a death down there. Some guy ran off the road and went right into the river. So it does need work and that's what this is about, fixing East Main. So I don't think we should lose our focus on what this is about. This is basically to fix East Main. Thank you.
Counselor Kelly and Counselor Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chair through you. I do, I am concerned as, as you are Counselor Dow concerning giving public money to private projects. I don't think that's appropriate. I see this as a town project on East Main Street that we're, that we are, are funding already. And if the fact that we're making these improvements can help the, the local business get a grant that they're working on without us contributing any money to it, I'm not, I'm not opposed to that. I'm not sure if they came to us and asked us for a grant for the housing project that they want down there, that I would support that, simply because I'm not sure we need to, we need to, that type additional housing in town yet. Nobody has really shown me that we do. But at the same time, we're already engaged in this East Main Street project and we're on, we're basically only gonna be giving them a letter saying that this would be our, our contribution to their project. It's not, we're not, we're not appropriating any funds for their particular project. Thank you.
Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair through you. I'd just like to echo what counselors Lazo and Kelly have said. This is an attribution that's being made by the town stating that it is making an attribution of funding that already exists for the road. That we're, we're attributing a portion of the funding for the road to the improvements that are requested by the AO so that the AO can go about getting the funding that they need. It's strictly an attribution. We're already spending the money on the roads. It's not costing us an extra dime. It's on the roads, it's not taxpayer money going to a private business that's never been asked for. It's strictly an attribution. That's all. Just an attribution. Thank you.
Any further discussion by any of the counselors? Counselor Dow?
Thank you, Chair through you. I'm not gonna get into big argument here. You say we're not gonna fund, not the citizen or the residents' money. Where the state got them from? Where that state got them from? They're just gonna give you a gift and they, they printed them and they give it to you? We pay for that. And it's, like I say, it's a loophole. We, we will go fix Main Street and it is project there, we already approve it, but this is extra. This is, we're gonna go get a waiver, pretend we're going on his property to do the drainage and all that, get a $700,000 to do all this work, get it ready for them, to add it more unit down there, what the town don't need. I need businesses. Show me businesses. I asked in the past, that's it. Everybody doing his, his, what's is good for him, not for the town. I don't think the town would fit more residents, especially these type of residents, uh, uh, buildings. We need businesses. Where's the businesses in town? Thank you.
Any further discussion by any counsel?
Whether we like it or not, there is a housing shortage nationwide and some of these laws are already in place. The governor has already voted on a housing bill and so there are gonna be things that are out of municipal control because there is a housing shortage. And it behooves us to work with businesses rather than try to go against the grain when these are things that are important, especially in a community where we have a growing unhoused population. And so we need to work together with the businesses that are here. And I agree, we do need more business, but we can do both things at the same time. We can walk and chew gum, that is possible. And again, like I said, some of the regulations, some of the laws around housing are going to be coming down from the federal government, from the state government, and it behooves us as people who are, you know, making decisions for our community, to work together to try to, to ease both sides, right? To make sure that it's the right fit for our community, but that we're also working with businesses and developers.
Any further discussion by any of the counselors? If there are no further discussion, roll call.
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
No.
Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Marketti?
Yes.
Counselor Montigny?
No.
Counselor Ortiz?
No.
Counselor Rivas? Five yess?
Six yess.
Six yess?
Passes. Moving on to Agenda Item.
Sixteen.
Number sixteen. I got so many ink marks on this. Review amend, excuse me, review amending the Southbridge zoning bylaw, section eight, comma seven, adult, use marijuana establishment to authorize for hours of operation, expand between 10:00 PM and 8:00 AM.
Chair, it should be eleven last time.
No, it, um, let it go as it is. The amendment is in the, it's not amended yet, it'll be amended in its final draft. If you look at the amended version, it's in the, in the packet, but this is the original motion we're gonna read. Do I have a motion?
I'm so moved.
Second.
Is the motion a second? Discussion on second reading.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
So when it comes to the third and final reading, the correct times and all that's gonna be shown here on the.
All the amendments will be on the third reading.
Okay, thank you.
Will we accept it? Any further discussion? If not, roll call.
This is just a reading, correct?
It's just a reading.
Oh, just a reading, I'm sorry. Consider that the second reading. Moving on to Counselors Forum. Counselor Marketti?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Like I said earlier, I did have some calls last week about the roads and I did try to explain that we have been working on some roads in town. East Main is coming up. Dennison is getting, getting worked on. But some of the residents are, are saying that, you know, there are some roads that they drive on that they would like to, other roads in town specifically in their neighborhoods. They also specifically mentioned the area down by the Globe. Main Street going down into the Globe is, is pretty rough and just to keep putting patches in the potholes, they don't feel it's good. They'd like to see the whole thing paved over and so I, I said I would mention it. The other thing I wanted to bring up was I did, I did go to Autumn Fest and I really had a good time. It was an excellent event. I, I didn't think the weather was gonna cooperate and even though it was a little drizzly out there, it wasn't really that bad. It was pretty comfortable. I had a good time walking around, seeing the different booths that were set up. I also stopped by and talked to the fire station, the fire, the guys from the fire department and I did ask them what's going on with the fire station and to be honest with you, they didn't know what was going on it. So I would like to know what's going on with the fire station, if we could get like something, something, if we could have a meeting or something just to discuss what's going on because it doesn't seem like anyone knows what's going on. We voted on that 2021, the residents of this town voted on the fire station, they've done a lot of work over there. If you recall, I was the only one that put my, my butt on the line on that. But, but now that we've spent all this money, some residents would like to know what's going on. Are we going back to the drawing board? Are we putting it back on the ballot exactly what's going on? So I think it's time, time we sit down and we have a discussion about what's going on with that, just so we can have a final, finalize this project. And the other thing is, I, I wish Counselor Shinier good health. I understand he had a little bit of a healthcare last week and I, and I hope that everything's okay with you. And my condolences to Counselor Dow for his, loss of his, his aunt. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair through you. I also would like to offer my condolences to Counselor Dow and my best wishes to Counselor Shinia for a speedy recovery and continued good health. I think Counselor Rivas is correct. There is a tremendous shortage of housing in this country, not just in this state, the entire country. And both the federal and state governments are promulgating laws in terms of trying to get solutions to the problem so that people can have a place to live, can have a roof over their heads. It's gotten to the point in this state that there's laws that are being enforced, towns are being brought to court because they've openly decided to violate or to not follow, I shouldn't say violate, that's too strong, but to choose, to choose not to adapt and follow some of the laws that have been passed. And the Attorney General in the state has taken them to court to, to force them to, to follow the law, to enjoin them into doing what is necessary according to the law. People in this town alone, in Southbridge, are having a hard time finding a place to live. There's no way around that. I think we need to be aware of that. I think Counselor Rivas is correct. We can walk and chew gum at the same time. of that. I think Councillor Rivas is correct. We can walk and chew gum at the same time. I think that we don't have a choice. I think that it's coming at us, whether we like it or not, although I think it's morally the correct thing to do. I think ethically and morally, it's the right thing to do, to find housing for people that need it, to find housing for people that want it, and to give them an opportunity to have it. People are coming to this town. I know firsthand that people are coming here from California and Texas because they're going to work for Amazon, for instance. I believe Walmart is putting up a distribution center on the bend by the state police, the Charlton State Police Barracks entrance. I believe there's a Walmart going in there in the woods. Not a distribution center, not a store. I stand to be corrected on that. So people are coming here. They're coming to Southbridge because you're not going to get that kind of living circumstance in Sturbridge or Charlton. And they're coming here, and they're staying here. We need to be aware of that. We can't bury our heads in the sand. We need to be aware of that, and we need to come up with solutions and offer solutions for the problem. It's coming at us. It's the, it's not the light at the end of the tunnel. It's the train coming the other way at us. And I think it would behoove us to, to really be aware of that and to begin to look at possible solutions. Thank you. That's all I have.
Counsel Dow?
Thank you, Chair Threu-Yu. Thank you, Councillor Marquetti. Thank you, Councillor Daniel. I hope you have a good health. Councillor Shenier, the whole issue tonight is, we always get half the papers. We don't do all our homework. We don't know. If I know that, I get them. I search. And this is what put me on a point when I say loophole. Why we don't do the businesses in town and let them build in Charlton and Sturbridge? They have more free land, open land. Southbridge needs businesses. I'm not against residents, but Southbridge should be in the map, in the whole country, not country, but nationwide. A.O., now we're looking to do a project, apartment down there, more heavy for the police, more heavy for the fire department. We need to hire more police in the future, fire department. D.P.W. can't keep up on our own road. Now we're going to give them extra work. I'm not against doing apartments. Go get money on your own and do them. Don't come for free money from the state and let us approve it. And then later on, when you owe your salary and everything, you would tell them, take the money and go somewhere else. Let's see, let's see the real and put it on the table, not be fake. Let's, let's, let's look at it in, in the general, how it's going. Nobody against residents and buildings and use your own money. Don't come here and try to do a loophole and get free money, and then later on, when you finish the project, sell it or do something, make the money and go somewhere else. I want businesses in town. Our residents, they need to work in town. They don't have to travel three hour, four hour. Amazon should be in Southbridge. Walmart should be in Southbridge, not in the other towns. And we can let people live here and have, it's supposed to be 55 and plus. We have all young people on, 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 they don't work. They're getting free money. That's what Southbridge is advertised for. Come live in Southbridge and live for free. Thank you.
Councillor Shenier?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to wish my condolences to Councillor Dow and the recent loss of his aunt. And I also want to thank the community support that was given to me this, a week ago, when I had a pretty good scare of a stroke. I'm lucky I came out of it pretty much out of, out of it, and I'm still recuperating some. All I can say is that I used to be a critic of Harrington Hospital at times, and I can't express the gratitude that I have towards that facility on that medical emergency that I had last Friday night. And just want to thank all the nurses and doctors that treated me and sent me off to UMass. And thank you, and that's it.
Councillor Ortiz?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Councillor Rivas?
I want to also extend my condolences to Councillor Dow, and wishing Councillor Shenier continued health. Glad you're feeling better. I have a couple of different items. We had our Southbridge Community Connections Resource Fair at, at Henry Street Park recently. And it's so great to see families in that area engaging with services that are much needed. You know, like lots of families, children, you know, playing on their new equipment that we have at the park there, especially the communication boards. And thank, thank you to Carla Veracruz Davila from our school committee, who contributed a lot of information about the communication board and accessible playground equipment. And it's just great to see families in that area. It's a park that I used to go to when I was a kid, and, and I love to see the improvements and all of the activity going on in that park and that, that side of our, you know, our community. And thank you to Mike in that recreation for partnering with all of the agencies and putting that together. I also attended Autumn Fest. I actually volunteered. And it's great to see the food trucks and, you know, again, people participating, getting, you know, one of the artisans and all of the different organizations sharing information about projects that they're working on, the housing survey. If you haven't done it yet, it's still online. It's on the town website. Please engage with that survey. And, you know, obviously, that is a very important topic that we've been discussing tonight. So that is a way to have your voices heard. You know, Town Manager, I don't, I can't remember the, it's, is it, it's a link on our town website?
Yes, it is.
All right. And yeah, so make sure you go on there and take the survey. You know, it's a lot of good information that Central Mass Regional Planning Commission puts together, and they will do a report that we will also get access to when that survey is done. I did attend the Central Mass Regional Planning Dinner presentation with Councillor Daniel and our Town Manager. And they provide so much, so many great services and support to all of our communities in our region. It was great to hear about and learn about, you know, the G.I.S. systems, and learn about, you know, how they, you know, they process and they monitor the CWDG grants that our town benefits from. And such a growing organization, and seeing that there's a lot of support for our communities. And so I'm glad that our Town Manager and PEG, you know, accessed that. They said some great things about PEG. And I did warn them, they can't steal you from us. So, because they were, you know, praising PEG and the work that she's done for our community. I also want to mention, I've attended the WRTA Advisory Board meeting, and they talked about a study that they will be embarking on in the next year to improve on-time responses, you know, reviewing the departures, the start times of trips to the end time, looking at schedules, the expected results. They're hoping to make some headway on, you know, bus bunching and making sure that services are consistent. And so that was good to hear. They did talk about ridership. They did, they reviewed some of the results from their ridership surveys. Ridership has increased 16% over F.Y. 23. And so that is largely due to the fare free, you know, implementation over since COVID. And it is one of the WRTAs that has been most successful with ridership. And all of that information will be shared on the WRTA site. They'll also send us that report, and I can share that with the other councillors. But I thought that was great information and really increasing responses for the CMTM and the other services that we also utilize through Elder Bus, that our community utilizes those services. And they're going to be looking at all of that to make sure that, again, their services are consistent, and that people are getting the services that, that they need through the DOT BRTA. And I think that, that is all I have.
Counsel Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, thank you, Chairman Threu-Yu. Couple of things tonight. First of all, my condolences to Councillor Dow, and I wish you good health, Councillor Shenier. Couple of things. First, on the housing issue, I agree, housing is an issue nationwide. Housing is an issue certainly in, in, in Boston, in Massachusetts generally. It's a very complicated issue. What kind of housing do we need? Do we need affordable housing? Do we need all-income housing? Do we need, do we need subsidized housing? Housing, however, is, is, is an issue for a variety of reasons, very complicated reasons that I'm not sure the town of Southbridge can solve, bottom line. We have, we have communities surrounding us, Charlton and, and South, and Sturbridge, for instance, whose zoning laws basically dissuade anybody from building any type of multi, multifamily housing in either one of those communities. Maybe something needs to happen at the legislative level to, to, to level the playing field between towns like Southbridge and towns like Sturbridge and, and Charlton. You know, why, why isn't anybody building housing? Housing generally is a supply and demand economy, all right? If, if there's short supply and high demand, then prices go up, all right? But then, you should, you should see on the, on the demand side, people building houses for, to satisfy the demand. Nobody's building today. I don't know why. But that's a question that needs to be answered, and it's really a big question. You know, if, if, if more, if, if there's more house, housing in the market, then prices come down. That's the way the economy works. We're not going to solve, Southbridge is not going to solve the housing crisis, bottom line. All right? We need, we need, we need economic development in town. And that's really what I, what I think we, we as, as a council should be focused on, is economic development. To that goal, one of the chief issues that we have are the schools. And I commend Councillor, Chairman Lazo, Councillor Montigny for their participation, as well as the Town Manager, for their participation in a joint meeting with DESI and School Committee on apparently a way forward. There was an article in the Southbridge News about a, about that, that addressed that, where the School Committee apparently is meeting now with a DESI-chosen consultant to, to pave the way to retaking our control from, control, taking back control of our schools. That said, I was reading this article, and, you know, it's just, there's no timeline as to when this is going to happen. I don't know. Maybe we haven't discussed it. Maybe we have, maybe we need to put a timeline in place. But if we're going to move forward with this, it seems to me that we should be pushing and really insisting on a drop dead date, that the town, that, that DESI will be out, we will take back control of our schools on a date certain in the future. And I would say a date certain sooner rather than later. Because if we don't have a date certain, what's going to happen is, everybody's going to drag their feet. Everybody's going to think they have all the time in the world, the School Committee included, to, to get the training they need. All right? We need a drop dead date. And I would, I would push for an earlier drop dead date. I have not been, I've not been part of the discussions in this. I, I know those, those were, were, those meetings were limited to a certain number of people, so I wasn't there and don't have the insight on it. But I would really encourage those who are negotiating this to insist on a drop dead date. And I would say 18 months is good enough. It can be done in 18 months. And, and that would be my drop dead, drop, drop dead date. So I just would encourage those participating in these talks to insist on a drop dead date. We need to get the economy in this town moving. The schools are critical to that. We can't move forward without getting our, without getting our schools back. I think that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Right, Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to offer my condolences as well to the Dow family and to Councillor Shenier's speedy recovery. I'm happy we're all here together tonight. I just wanted to touch quick upon, I went to Autumn Fest, and it was great, even despite some, a little bit of rainy weather. It was a great turnout. A few other councillors were there with me. I'm excited for the School Committee and the joint meeting that we have going on. And to touch upon the previous speaker's comments, very, very happy that I was able to participate and honored, looking forward to the future. And I don't disagree with the bottom line date. And I also don't disagree with what you're saying about housing. But the reason that I voted no tonight is because, well, simply, I, I do agree with Councillor Dow on what he's saying, but there is no real loophole. I think Mr. Norton is just saying, I have a criteria that I need to meet to get a state or federal grant. One of, one of which is just a letter saying your existing project can, can benefit in front of my property. And Councillor Dow is correct. It does, it's federal state taxes. Those are taxes that we pay, not as directly as the property tax. But it, it does affect directly, as he said, our water and sewer, our police and fire. I mean, it has been cited in the past that the Wells Project and the K Street Project alone has been some of the reasons why the chiefs have come to include more police officers and more fire, because they have just simply got more calls. So you feel the effect of the tax dollars. And it's not hitting home as hard as property tax, something like maybe a fire station project. But if you voted no tonight, it's because, like I did, it's because you really don't support this project at any level. It, it, there is no business end of this project. It's, it's all housing. And, and I do agree that there is a housing problem in Massachusetts. But, you know, somebody just bought like 190, 200 units up in the Main Street 600 area, the Cross Street and all these areas. And they're using their own money to improve these places for people in our town. And I think that's the type of, the type of projects for housing that I support. I, I don't need any more, especially when the grant that the gentleman might be going for doesn't really provide any sort of business aspect. It's sure, you know, I saw the presentation myself. It'd be open to the public, and there's a pocket park. But there's, there's really no use to me. I think we need to fix what's wrong with our town first, instead of creating more and more people coming in and protect the tax dollars of the citizens. We don't need that project. And I can respect anybody who voted yes because of their concern for housing and moral ethics. But that's not the project that I want to support from top to bottom, personally. And thank you very much for all your comments tonight on that. It was really eye-opening. Thank you.
We're going to 18. Next meeting day?
Chair, chair, excuse me. I got a...
No, you can't. We can't go volley. Everybody gets to talk one time.
I just got a text message.
Oh, go ahead.
I'd like to ask the Town Manager to look at it. The, the kids at Charlton Street playing football, and the parents have the car light on, and, and, and the phone is no light. I don't know who's in charge. Why are kids in our community want to do sport and do activity and, you know, I don't know, if the school, I don't have nothing to do with you, but I, if you can look at it, why are kids, they can't play and have a safe place in their town to enjoy the sport? If you can look at it, please, and, and see what's going on, let me know. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Discuss the next meeting day. Right, Chairman?
Oh, the next meeting day is Monday, October 7th, 2024, at 7:00 P.M. in the council chambers.
Do we have motion to adjourn?
Exactly.
Motion second, all in favor? Oppose? And Mr. Law?